Ready?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Ready?
Whenever you are, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion to go in closed session?
So moved.
Ready?
Okay, and?
Be it resolved Montgomery County Board of Supervisors Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enter to closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, dispensary, or resignation of Pacific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One be the Library Board. Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Kaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Figg?
Aye.
Ms. Booth?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Cherokee?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
In closed session. Is there a motion to come out of closed session? Where is the Board of Supervisors Montgomery County at today? Closed meeting on this date for suits and affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in where is section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia required to certify by the board that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters fully lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia laws were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as was identified in the motion conveyed that closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Kaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Figg?
Aye.
Ms. Booth?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Moss? Did I say Mr. Moss already at the end? Yeah. Cherokee?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Now we have invocation and pledge allegiance by the county administrator.
We can stand for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Presentation, Wonder University.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Sarah Hanks is here with us tonight. Sarah, welcome.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. Just going to minimize this and we have a brief presentation here. I appreciate your time and the opportunity to share a little bit more about Wonder Universe. I know each of you have heard from me and about this project, I'm sure, in our community. So exciting to be able to share some details, especially since we just started renovations last week. So if you're at the mall, you'll see now that Charlotte Roost has racks down, that we've started priming and painting the walls, and that soon we'll be installing exhibits. So a really neat time to be able to share our vision for the future. In the state of Virginia, about 52% of children ages three and four are not enrolled in any early childhood education program. In the New River Valley, that number is about 70%. That ranges from birth to age five. Whether there's a placement for that child in a local community, spots aren't available for about 70% of our children. Preparing them for kindergarten then becomes a real challenge. We know that by fourth grade, about 57% of our children are not reading at grade level. And then by the time they're in sixth grade, about 60% of them are not performing math at grade level. Math is a foundational, or reading is a foundational skill for math development. We know that third grade SOLs are the best predictor for high school graduation rates. And when we see scores in fourth grade and sixth grade that indicate our youth aren't achieving, we need to look back and consider what we can do in early childhood to encourage their success. This is not a failure of our kindergarten, first, or second grades, but the first five years of life where we know approximately 90% of brain development occurs. The neural connections that our children are making before they walk through our public classrooms is really important. And that's a big part of our mission, making sure that our community has resources for informal early childhood education and that we give every child a great start in life. Our mission is to educate, amuse, and inspire children. We want that curiosity to begin at a young age where they're interested, they're intrigued, they're asking questions, and they become immersed in their surroundings so that they can build on a foundation of inquiry-based learning when they move into the school system, become interested in novel careers, and develop our workforce by the time they graduate in our public school system. Important to our work, the American Academy of Pediatrics last year published a new report, the first in about 11 years, that articulates the importance of play. Their opening paragraph is on the screen, and they conclude by stating that play improves life course trajectories. If that's not an important statement, it's certainly one that we as a board and staff team carry with significance. That play in and of itself, making that the foundational work of early childhood, improves a child's life course trajectory. And frankly, the threats to play in our community are ever-present. From multiple parents working outside the household, to single-parent households who struggle with multiple jobs, the poverty rate in the New River Valley, and lack of early access to education resources makes it more important than ever that the museum is accessible not only to families who have financial resources, but those that don't. So what do we do? We advocate for play as a critical component of early childhood development. That's the education and global well-being of children. Oh, my apologies. We equip kids and caregivers to play together. The bond that's formed between the caregiver and the child is essential in moving that child's development forward, helping a caregiver to understand the neurological development, what's happening cognitively, socially, emotionally, and physically as they play together. One of our goals is to increase that play by five minutes a day for the first five years. What would happen if a caregiver understood the importance of that additional five minutes of integrated play, that engaged, focused time that they have together with a child? Over the course of the first five years, we're talking about hundreds of hours of education and learning that really builds the foundation for a lifelong love of learning and curiosity. Lastly, we want to empower a diverse community of learners. The museum in and of itself is a diverse place. One of the last days we were open in Blacksburg, I could count four languages being spoken at the museum at one time. We are a hub where families gather. And so being able to champion that and make sure all families feel a sense of belonging and as if they're included and enriched by our environment is really essential. So by the numbers, a quick overview of the work we've done recently. In 2013, we had more than 20, I'm sorry, 2018, we had more than 23,000 guests visit the Children's Museum of Blacksburg. For context, we have about 3,500 square feet of exhibit floor space, and we were open about 24 hours a week. Based on those numbers, we're exceeding the admission rate of most museums in our region. The demand for educational and resources for families continues to grow as industry and the economy grows in the New River Valley. 70% of our guests are members. That's an important distinction in our community. Membership allows unlimited access to the museum and discounts on all of our other preregistered programs and services throughout the year, so we become accessible. It's not a pay-to-play as much as it is a place where our community gathers. 65% of our guests in 2018 are, were Montgomery County residents. We expect that while we're expanding our reach in the New River Valley by moving to Christiansburg at the New River Valley Mall, that's still a substantial base of our patrons. We offered 220 programs in 2018, and over 130 individuals were admitted in our Museums for All program. Anyone who has SNAP or EBT benefits are admitted to the museum for free. We launched that program mid-year and had a tremendous response. We're looking forward to that growing in the future as well. So as you know, as we made the decision to move from Blacksburg and the Children's Museum of Blacksburg to the New River Valley Mall, we did rebrand. You can't be the Children's Museum of Blacksburg here in Christiansburg. So we compiled a task force to learn a little bit more about how we might resonate with the New River Valley, and this really unique brand was born. This is born directly from the voices of our members and our community. Graphically, it represents the New River Valley and the things that are important to us as an organization, keeping kids at the center of our focus, but incorporating aspects of our regional heritage, agricultural, rail, the STEM education that our institutions offer, arts and culture, and most importantly, focusing on the wonder that we hope kids aspire to in our space. Our programs and exhibits have five really critical components that make up what we believe to be the prescription for playful learning. All of our work is child-centered but family-focused. We design and plan for the child that walks through our doors, but importantly, we want to engage that caregiver. We have a thoughtful role for each of our play partners in that work. 21st Century Skills are top of mind. In Virginia, we may also refer to those as the five Cs: communication, collaboration, critical thinking, citizenship, and, what did I get to? Collaboration, critical thinking, citizenship. Someone's going to have to help me out on the last two. Those five Cs, those higher-order thinking skills, those are things we want to make sure are ever-present for our kids, both in the design of our exhibits, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that, as well as in the programs that we offer. Kids are face-to-face, they're having conversations, they're working to solve problems together. We're transdisciplinary. We want to make sure each of our exhibits and programs offers opportunity for literacy, math, bilingual learning. We want to make sure that it's not just a focus on science, just a focus on the arts, but that we're integrating those in ways that help kids to think critically about their future as well. It's intentionally unstructured. There's no end in mind. It really is up to the socially constructed nature of play that brings our children and families together. And lastly, it's multi-sensory. It's an opportunity to think, smell, feel, engaged in a variety of different ways. And we know that that's really essential for kids to learn as well. So I want to walk through a few of our creative exhibits and give you a sense of what to expect if you were to walk through our doors in a few months. You're first viewing our Farm to Table exhibit. This exhibit will occupy approximately 800 square feet of our space to the right of our main entrance. We moved away from a supermarket model and wanted to focus on the regional agriculture in the New River Valley and beyond. You'll see in this image, our youth guests will be able to farm, they'll be able to buy and sell at our farmer's market stand, and we're doing some really great work both in Blacksburg, Christiansburg, and Radford with Farmer's Market as partners. And then our Farm Kitchen, where kids will be able to go in and prepare a meal. We wanted to make this beyond the idea of choosing a food off the shelf and making the economic transaction. That's still a part of this experience, but we're also passively encouraging healthy eating by only providing fresh fruits, vegetables, and farmer's market types of foods. Our infant toddler space will be unique in the region. It's one where we really think of that word in our what-do-we-do, our equipping opportunity. We have a number of parents, especially in that birth to 12-month range, who walk in and say, "We don't know what to do. How do we play with our child?" The rapid development of children during that first 12 months is really essential. And so how can we help them to know that stacking cups, building with blocks, what's the language they should be developing? How does it sound? What does it look like? How do we help them to engage in really meaningful ways? Our theater will provide opportunities for dramatic role-playing, the opportunity to be empathetic, to step into someone else's shoes, to be whoever it is that you want to be, gives our kids the opportunity to imagine a future in which they're productive, engaged, and excited. We think about the rail heritage in our community, and our designers have creatively incorporated a Hyperloop. This will be a future installation for us, but thinking about how the future moves into the New River Valley. Drone Zone is an opportunity for us to connect to SOLs in a more critical way. We know that educators have a hard time with our computer science curriculum and integrating that in the classroom. We have three drones and 14 obstacles, so whether this is a permanent exhibit or something that takes place in our classroom, it's an opportunity to age up, to be sure that we're meeting the needs of our third, fourth, and fifth graders. And meeting a critical need in terms of what our educators have indicated is important in helping them accomplish their curriculum development. We do have Engine 3 from Blacksburg that will be installed in the museum. This graphic will be modified just a little bit. The 27-foot truck is quite a bit to fit in our space, so we'll be modifying that to about 16 feet. But kids will have an opportunity to explore citizenship and the vocation of firefighting as well as understanding two safe ways out. So incorporating fire safety in education is a part of that exhibit as well. An amazing air wall will give kids a chance to learn about a pneumatic system and the way that air flows, the power of air. But if we look beyond what's teachable in this instance, we also see an incredibly inclusive exhibit, one where any child or adult with any ability, physical or otherwise, is able to engage. And if you've visited a children or science museum, you know that this is just a really fun opportunity to be silly and play together. This is one of our really special spaces. The sensory space will be a multi-sensory installation, will be the only certified autism center in southwest Virginia. That means that about 80% of our staff need to be certified to support children and families with autism, but the space is designed with a therapeutic benefit in mind, so families who are visiting the museum will not only have access to all of our exhibit spaces, but they'll be able to serve as their child's first and best teacher utilizing materials and resources that they would typically only find in a therapeutic environment to enhance their child's development moving forward, all for the cost of admission or as part of their annual membership. We'd like to consider Montgomery County Board of Supervisors as a partner in strengthening the New River Valley and the families that we serve. We believe that it's enhancing the quality of life. We spoke earlier this evening with other guests here about the economic development of our region and the importance of attracting young families to many of the growing industries in the area. We believe the museum begins to expand the opportunities for young families in our community, even beyond that of what they're looking for in Raleigh and Richmond and other more urban areas. We believe that the positive economic development will last. It's not just something that will occur today when we open, but as we expand to serve 50,000 to 65,000 guests through our doors each year, we know that that will have an impact here in Christiansburg, and we desire to be a destination for early childhood education and playful learning in southwest Virginia. I'd like to take just a moment to tell you a little bit more about how families experience the museum, and then I'd love to entertain your questions as well. Hazel shared with us her testimony and why it's important to serve families that have special needs. And this is just a portion of her statement, but bear with me while I share this with you. She's describing that her son Jacob had recently been diagnosed with autism, and as her family was exploring opportunities in the region, she was encouraged to visit special nights for special kids at our location in Blacksburg. I finally gave in. She, her boss, gloated, and the experience went about like her husband and I, my husband and I thought they would, like many others had gone before, but with one major difference. We belonged there. Jacob belonged there. Our family belonged there. We were in the middle of people who got it, and that's a rare thing for us. And that's what the area has been missing, not just in our community, but in the whole New River Valley. People who get it, like staff and parents we met that night. Finding a place where children of all different backgrounds and abilities learn together and the power of play for kids and their families, we need places like Wonder Universe so that all families can be a part of our community that's centered around not just learning about the world around us, but about the people around us, too. Hazel really believes in our mission because just one of her three kids has special needs. But at our museum, Jacob has something to offer the other children. Her other children have an opportunity to learn just alongside him, and they're in that work together as a family. They're playing together and making memories together. What's important about this next stage of our work, though, is this is a really big endeavor. Our annual operating budget is made up of about 50% earned income and about 50% contributed support. That's fairly traditional for children's museums like ours in communities like ours. So while we desire to diversify our earned income, offer more programs and more opportunities to create a financially stable organization for our community, we also know that we'll rely on Montgomery County, Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and the surrounding communities to ensure that our museum is available and accessible to all families as we move forward. I'd entertain your questions and happy to provide any additional information about the work we're doing as we move forward.
Any more having questions?
Steve?
Go ahead.
As the children and the parents come in there, do they move about the museum like you would in a traditional museum? They'll stay at one station until they're ready to move on to the next one, or is it all timed?
No, they're welcome to stay for as long as they like. They'll move from exhibit to exhibit depending on their child's interest and age. So most families, the average stay is somewhere between 90 minutes and two hours. We have had families stay for an eight-hour day. They'll pack a lunch, eat on a bench outside, and come back in. So depending on their resource, where they're coming from, their admission, once they pay that, is good all day, as well as their membership then would provide unlimited access during that period of time.
And you probably already said this, but what is the age range that you're geared towards?
Sure. Our museum in Blacksburg is really geared to the birth-to-age-five demographic, and this museum, we're really targeting at least through early childhood, which is age eight. And our goal is to reach some of those 10-year-olds through late elementary. We know if we hit some of our 10-year-olds, we've got all of our eight-year-olds. So our strategy is to be sure at least through grade three that we have a really solid hold on those kiddos, and we're providing them with engaged learning experiences.
Thank you.
Although our funding was not awarded this year, we do hope to apply in the future and hope that you might reconsider our request or other opportunities to support this important work.
Can I ask a question?
Should we provide a moment?
Yeah. So early on in your presentation, you mentioned the percentage of youngsters who do not have childcare.
Correct.
But the numbers that you showed, you showed 130 of 23,000 were SNAP or other...
Correct.
Of the 23,000 besides that 130, how many of those 70% or 57% are you actually drawing in? You see what I'm saying? Like, if, maybe you're serving everybody but that 70%.
Right.
You know what I mean?
And so that's a hard number for us to capture. We have started doing a zip code capture at the end of the year to see where folks are coming from so that we can better mark within the New River Valley those pockets of individuals. And then we can map that to different areas of poverty, of fluids, access. So we don't know whether we're really serving, I suppose, that 70% of kids who aren't in any early childhood setting. But what's important is that we're providing that access and that the more diverse our organization becomes and the more marketing that we do. Our partnerships with organizations like Smart Beginning and CHIP of the New River Valley, the Montgomery County Christmas Store, for instance, we distributed coupons to each family who visited the Christmas Store, reminding them that they have free admission to the museum. That's not one time or once a week, it's any time they want it that we're open. So that's an unlimited benefit. Trying to reach out through Bob Cat backpacks or Micah's backpack to be sure we're reaching those families. Transportation remains a challenge. Families and communities that don't have access to our space, I think, has been a real barrier in the past. One of the unique things about the New River Valley Mall is with the exception of Jones County, there is transportation from each of the localities in the New River Valley to bring them into Montgomery County and into Christiansburg, so they can take the connector from Pilaski, Radford, or Blacksburg and have access to the museum. That's novel in the work that we're doing moving forward. So I hope that our efforts in reaching those families, building relationships with organizations that serve them as well, and being a partner in developing that trust, will encourage them to see us as a partner and a hub for lifelong learning in the New River Valley.
And can you refresh our memory? How much did you ask for? And have you ever received any funding from us before?
We requested $25,000 this year, and no, we have not previously received any funding from Montgomery County.
And how long has the museum been in place, been operating?
Five years operational. We've been in existence for nine years as a charter 501(c)(3) organization. In the two years prior to our closing at First and Main, we saw a 25% increase in admission and growth of our programs. So we're really expecting that trend to continue, and we know the demand in our community is significant, looking for opportunities for families to engage together and enjoy meaningful memory-making in the process.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. You said you were operational 24 hours a week?
Correct.
And what are your hours?
We were previously only open for a few morning hours, Wednesday, Thursday, and then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Our operating hours at the New River Valley Mall will be Tuesday through Saturday, 9:30 or 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 or 5:30, and then Sundays from 1:00 until that same closed time. So we'll be doing a survey of our members to be sure that we select the best opening and closing times to accommodate their general use of the museum as well.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as a former teacher that's taught from preschool all the way up through third grade, I just, I agree with everything that you've stated. You're such a passionate advocate for this.
Thank you.
We couldn't have a better person out there trying to inform people about this program. I mean, it's dynamic, it's one of a kind. I think that it's going to be an invaluable asset. When you move it over to Christiansburg, it already was such an asset before, but this is going to be so much more expanded. I want to personally thank you for the work that you and your board have done, and also for educating the community about how important those first years are. I mean, they're critical, and we still have children that aren't getting the kind of support that they need for those quality first years. That's when their brains are like sponges and they soak up everything. And as a teacher, and I taught kindergarten, too, you can tell the children that have had experiences when they come to school and the ones that haven't.
Kindergarten readiness is so critical, and we think about that in terms of can they write their name or do they know their ABCs? And what we really want to know is can they engage with their peers? Can they take instruction from non-family member adults? Right? Can they be, are they able to learn in a social environment? So we're hopeful that our work is contributing to the success of those kiddos, and we appreciate so much your support, Mary.
And, you know, I was thinking, New River Community College has all that with the preschool, and so does, there's things at Tech, and also, let me see, in the high schools with the childcare programs, do you guys partner with any of them to do anything at all?
We do. So we actually have had some initial conversations with administration at New River Community College about ways that we can engage with their students in the early childhood programs, as well as utilizing their STEM center at the New River Valley Mall to support some of our older students who might come on field trips, other kinds of partnerships and collaboration because we'll be co-located in that space. We have worked with Blacksburg High School and some of the students in their early childhood education program. We have several volunteers who've committed to Wonder Universe through the ACE program as well, who are interested in early childhood. So not only do they have the benefit of engaging in the community college, but they'll have a location onsite where they'll be able to practice those skills. And I think our network continues to expand as doors open and opportunities to partner, and so we certainly welcome all of those, all of those partners, all of those opportunities, and all of the youth and educators that we can, we can bring into the building.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Any more questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sarah.
Now moving on to the public hearing.
Yes, sir. We do have a public hearing this evening for the proposed boundary adjustment agreement with the town of Christiansburg for the Meadows and the Round Meadow Country Club. I think we're good. That's all we need. You just need to open the public hearing.
We opened this up to the public hearing. No one has signed up, but if you would like to step forth and state your name and address, you have five minutes to speak. CNN One will close this public address on the Meadows and Round Meadows Country Club. Moving on to just public address, you can step up and speak about anything you'd like to. No one has signed up. If you would like to step forth and state your name and address, you have five minutes. CNN One will close the public address session. Addendum.
No addendum this evening, sir.
We have no addendum. Is there a motion for consent, addendum?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, you call roll, please.
Ms. Figg?
Aye.
Ms. Booth?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Kaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Cherokee?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
This part here, I'm going to turn over.
All right. For new business, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, the first item we have under new business this evening is a resolution for the approval of a boundary line adjustment agreement with the town of Christiansburg, the Meadows Round Meadow Country Club. This is to approve an agreement with the town to incorporate approximately 125.652 acres of the property formerly known as the Meadows and Round Meadow Country Club adjacent to Crispin Mill Road and the Norfolk Southern Railroad right-of-way in the Reiner Magisterial District. And we just had a public hearing a few minutes ago on this item, and there were no comments made regarding this item.
I would make a motion that we approve the boundary line adjustment.
Second.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Booth?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Kaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Caskey?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair King?
Abstained from voting.
Six ayes, one abstained.
Very good.
Next item under new business this evening is a resolution related to the Pepper's Ferry Regional Wastewater Treatment Authority compensation policy. This has been brought before you with an attached letter from the Pepper's Ferry Regional Wastewater Treatment Authority's Executive Director, who's requested a resolution from each of the bodies that are members of this authority related to adjusting members' annual compen, board members' members' annual compensation related to cost of living adjustments. And this is a resolution that if you approve, this item will have to come back before you each year for approval each year. That was probably clear as mud, but I'll be glad to explain it if I go deep too further.
So, we've never done this before, correct?
That's my understanding, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, the idea is that every year, a cost of adjustment could be given, and so, all of the localities would have to approve that.
Well, if you approve this resolution, it will propose that any future adjustments in the Pepper's Ferry board members' compensation will be identical to the cost of living adjustment they're given by the association each year in their budget process. So, in other words, if you approve this resolution, Pepper's Ferry won't have to come back and request that of each jurisdiction each year for approval. This resolution will basically say going forward, whatever their employees get as a cost of living raise in the authority, that will be provided to the board members of the authority as well. So, it's kind of a one time, you approve it and it goes forward. That's the way I understand it.
And I guess, Todd, you don't want to say anything, right?
No.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, that's a good point, Chair King serves up to Pepper's Ferry Board right now, so I understand why he's...
Okay, I'll put the motion down the floor.
I'll second. Yeah.
It sounds to me like a good method for them to use to stay current as far as their compensation is concerned. I think it makes sense.
And the key paragraph in that resolution is whereas the authority has proposed a policy whereby future compensation adjustments for authority board members from year to year shall be identical to any cost of living adjustments provided by the authority board to authority employees generally. So, whatever their group approves, yeah, right.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, your call roll, please.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen?
Aye.
Chair King?
Abstained.
Six ayes, one abstained.
Because you're on the...
Right.
Board.
Now, the next one, y'all can abstain to this one. Establish annual compensation for members of the Board of Supervisors. I know the Board's had quite a bit of discussion on this, and at the last meeting, staff was directed to prepare a resolution that indicates...
Whoops.
An additional $3,000 per year for board members and an additional, am I looking at this right? Yeah. Was it $3,200 a year?
Two thousand.
Thank you. An additional, all board members would receive an additional $3,000 per year over the current salaries. The board chair, whoever he or she may be, would receive an additional 2,000 above that, and the vice chair, whoever he or she may be, would receive an additional 1,400 above that.
And I do want, I'll make that motion, and then I would like to discuss it after. There's a second.
Second.
One thing I would like to point out is it is an additional $200 that it's being increased. It's not a $2,000 increase for the board chair for this year, and, you know, we've had a lot of discussion about it. When I ran, I had no idea how much work the board chair and vice chair do, and we haven't had a raise in decades. With that being said, or at least over a decade, with that being said, I think this is appropriate, and perhaps maybe next year, you might look at something similar to the New River wastewater, Pepper's Ferry wastewater, so you don't go 10, 15 years without some kind of cost of living increase.
I would like to add to what Chris said. I was talking to one of the supervisors from Rockingham County, and they're probably going to go the other way, like we just discussed with the authority, because they want to be able to just, you know, do it and not have to worry about it every year. So, I would agree with that.
Chair, yeah, I would have to agree. I think the thing that is hardest probably for citizens and for myself also is when you do, it's not a large chunk of money, but yet it is in comparison to what the salary is, and to do with that all in one year is kind of uncomfortable. And if we would one day make it so, it would be similar to the wastewater authority. That just makes more sense, and it's a whole lot easier to understand and to take, so I think that would be good in the future.
Supervisor Vamone? Before we start talking about what we should do in the future, I would encourage us in the future to think similarly for all governmental employees. If we set a precedent for our board, I think that that should go down to our staff, you know, and they should get cost of living increases every year, as well as the school systems and things like that. So, before we start blanketing and saying, "Yeah, let's do it this way in the future," let's kind of think back about the repercussions and...
That's what it would be based on.
Yeah.
Like, for instance, let's say you have a really bad year and no one gets, and no one does. That's what it would, it's based on. The counties that I'm familiar with that do that, that's what they base it on, is like what their employees get.
And that's what the Pepper's Ferry is based on as well. If there's no employee raise, those board members do not get a raise.
For a county that reassesses every four years, that could be quite difficult. I'm just saying. I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that's a little bit more tricky for a county like ours, perhaps comparatively. That's all.
Any more questions or comments? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye. Ms. Bowen? Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, item D under new business this evening is the appropriation of funds for the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. The Board adopted the proposed budget back on April 15th, and this is the resolution that actually appropriates the funds that will provide funding for that budget beginning July 1, in the amount of $201,506,061.
Semoted. Second.
Thank you. Good, be in trouble.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, your call roll, please.
Ms. Fizikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowen? Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now that that's over with, I have to share a story. The question came up, what happens if we don't pass this?
That was my question.
I actually was in a jurisdiction about 20 years ago where the budget was approved, but then the budget appropriation, because it was a monetary appropriation, had to pass with a super majority of majority plus one. And the budget appropriation passed with the same 4-3 vote that the budget passed on, but that wasn't enough to appropriate the budget. So, we had a budget, but we didn't have any money. That was an interesting meeting. I don't want everyone to go through one of those again.
Sure.
Yes, please. On behalf of the staff, thank you very much for that last vote. In all sincerity, we appreciate the support moving forward, and we'll make good use of the funds. Mr. Chair and Board, last item on our agenda this evening is a transfer of school capital funds. This is a request, this is one of two requests that came from the school board at their June 4th meeting. This resolution is to appropriate funds to complete the Christiansburg High School Athletic Facility project, and also was a request for Harding Elementary School mobile units. There's another request that'll be on the June 24th agenda related to moving forward with the elementary school projects. But this evening, the request is related to Christiansburg High School Athletic Facilities and Harding Avenue Elementary School.
Semoted. Second.
Any discussion? Supervisor Steve?
The request for the athletic fields is something that we definitely were expecting, because this is the final phase of that and needs to be taken care of. But I was kind of surprised to see the Harding Avenue modular classrooms added to that, and I thought, well, how does that fall under capital improvements? And I looked up a definition, a capital improvement is the addition of a permanent structural change or the restoration of some aspect of a property that will either enhance the property's overall value, prolong its useful life, or adapt it to new uses. And I also thought, I thought we were told that these classrooms are rented. These may not be, I'm not sure, but either way, I was kind of surprised that, number one, that it was on here, and number two, that it's, I don't know if that's capital improvement, because they're temporary, until they get addition added to the school. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
Mr. Krantz is here from the schools. Tommy, can you answer that one?
Under Generally Accepted County Principles, you're correct. While these units are currently being leased, based off the projections for the next 10 years, we see them being on that site extent. The majority of these costs are not related to the lease of the unit. The majority of these costs that you see there is the cost of bringing the utilities to the site. With us having to set the ADA, with us having to bring all the utilities there, right now, we're looking at about $150,000 to $175,000. And that varies from locales to cap, whether you can capitalize those costs or not. I would argue since they're already going to be beyond one year, because they exceed $5,000, that they are a capitalizable item under Generally Accepted County Principles.
Well, I'm hoping that you can understand where I'm coming from.
Oh, you're making a very valid point.
Because in the letter from the, your board chair, it doesn't break it down like you just did.
No, because, I mean, it just says...
It just says...
Right, it just says $200,000.
For these, for these units, with no other information.
Yeah, it's, those units you've got is the lease cost is around $68,000 a year. The cost of putting the units on the ground and connecting is about another $65,000 one time. Then you have the cost of bringing all the utilities to that particular site, taking out a fence, then taking and putting up a new security fencing system, plus bringing all of the items that are inside of a classroom to those four units that you have, and you'll also have restrooms outside. So, it's a self, it's a fully self-contained unit. Depending on where projections go and what we see, I've seen districts buy those units. The mine is a kind of in-between, that classroom you build, which generally runs about $250,000 to $300,000 today, but it's not a trail. You know, it's in that in-between where you just don't have enough money. And they generally have a useful life between 20 to 25 years.
So, each unit's going to have its own restroom, isn't it?
It's going to have four classrooms, two down each hallway, then boys on one hallway and girls on the other, you know, full...
So, it's one big building with four classrooms?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's actually five pieces that come together to make the one building.
Well, I recall at our joint meeting that you all had mentioned the fact that Harding would need these extra classrooms. At the same time, we were, you were also discussing the improvements that were going to be made to the other elementary schools.
Right.
So, that's why, I mean, I think of those improvements as capital improvements, and I don't think of this type of thing as a capital improvement, and that's where I'm...
I think because of the length, I would argue that it is a capital improvement. I think generally if it was a year-to-year lease, and you are going to get rid of it in that one to three years, I would agree with you, it's probably more of an operating lease. But when you look at that projection over the next 10 years, I see that unit probably being in a long time, and the discussion will be, do you purchase it? And if so, you can break those units down. The problem is, once you break them down, putting them back together sometimes gets to be kind of expensive.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, you're telling us 10 years before anything's going to be done at Harding Avenue Elementary School?
Well, I mean, Mr. Todd, yes, sir. I mean, you look at, if you look at what we've got projected on the elementary side with the three, and then Christiansburg High School, and you're looking at the cost of construction inflation running around now 5%, and that's coming right out of the contractors. And you start trying to extrapolate that out seven to 10 years from now, based on capacity, which I understand, you know, I think y'all are very conservative with that. It gets to be where you say, where in the next seven, 10 years do you see that window?
All right. And if I remember right, from the numbers that we saw at one of the joint meetings, we were looking at Bellevue being around $5 million to expand that.
Yes, sir, today.
And then improve that. So, on this, I'm hearing 10 years, that's at $68,000 a year, so that's $680,000 in leases that we're going to be paying. And at that joint meeting, I thought it was going to cost, by the time that we were setting up, the projected cost was about a half a million dollars. Is that still the number, or has that changed?
Set up with everything in, we'll be right at about 400.
Okay, so, we're talking about... We're talking about a million dollars that we're talking about spending on mobile units over 10 years, and I know they've got a 20 or 25-year life potentially. I know that the mobile units we have falling branch, I think they had like a 15-year lifespan.
Right.
So, these must be...
They're in between the brick and mortar and a trail.
So, $5 million to renovate Bellevue, we're talking about spending a million dollars right here, and then, but we're still going to have to spend more money to upgrade Harding Avenue Elementary School at some time in the future.
And that's why I think you look at, at the appropriate time of possibly buying those units. In Richmond, what we did is we leased from one, it was intended to be a one-year lease, and then we ended up buying it because the dollars didn't work out. And I think you've got the same, you've got potentially the same situation here.
All right, so, if we look at buying them, how much do they cost to buy right now if we were to buy?
I wish I had that number, because if I would, I'd be guessing right now. They're not, their purchase price is not, I mean, it's obviously higher than our 10-year lease payment, but it's not off the chart.
I did almost identical thing that Supervisor Fizikowski, when I saw this, I looked at it as a capital, and this is not what I had envisioned about the funds that we set aside every single year. And that's just my thoughts on that, but thank you.
Any more questions?
Well, my only comment would be, you have to do something, because the school is like overcrowded. I mean, I went to graduation, I guess it was last week, and I gather the fifth grade's going to be the grade level that goes out there.
That's my understanding, it's ma'am.
And the older kids.
And I don't, I don't think that this is an issue of whether they need it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, they need it, you're absolutely correct.
But I just something.
It's the way that we're going about it. This should have been something that we talked about a little bit more in detail, and it should have been spelled out a little bit more in detail. I mean, what are we going to do next year or later on when money is asked for that we have no information about? I mean, that's, that's my concern, is the way we're going about it. I'm wondering if it may not be such a bad idea to put it off. If we could carve that out of our vote tonight and move that maybe to another night so that we can get all the numbers, like the purchase price of the actual unit.
Well...
And information like that.
I would ask the question then... I would ask the question then, how would that affect, you only have eight weeks before school starts again.
Yeah, we would have to use our operating funds.
I don't know how.
I mean, you can pull it out, we can use our operating funds and then true up on the backend, but we need to proceed because those units have to be in place for the start of school.
Again, I go back to what I just said.
But they told us that we needed it. I'm not sure exactly what more information you need.
What would stop, and I'm not accusing anybody of.
I understand.
Of future mischief. What would stop if, if you just added an extra sentence at the next appropriation Some kind of generic thing. It could be football uniforms, it could be, I don't know, water fountains, I don't know. Tables and chairs, I, I don't know. You know, what else could it be? I'm just saying, this board basically has in the past, or since I've been on it, looked for specifics. You yourself, Supervisor Bong, looks, you look for specifics. And that's all I'm asking for, that we look for specifics and we agree to it. I may very well want to vote for this. I don't really see anything negative against it.
Right.
You have to put the pipes in the ground if you're going to run water and sewer out to a building. I mean, that just makes, makes sense, but it's the way that we're going about it. Are, are we going to set some kind of precedence here? Or are we just going to make just this one exception?
No.
And we'll, we'll do it in the future.
I guess the reason why it's not bothering me is because my younger son, who is now 20 years old, was a sixth grader in Blacksburg Middle School in Christiansburg. And he had trail, I mean, what they did at the Christiansburg school over the summer and the trailers was mind-blowing. And the only way that they could do that was with the support of this board, totally understandable. So when they said Harding Elementary needs extra trailers or what have you, I'm like, okay, I know what trailers are, you know? That's not super complicated stuff to me, and that's why I'm not raising any questions. I'm not saying, you know, your questions, your concerns, that's great. I'm just, I'm hoping that you get as much information as you need to approve it tonight just because, you know, my perspective and your perspective is different, that's all.
And I, I think that the crux of the problem, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is labeling the 200,000 as a capital expense when it's a rented depreciating asset. I mean, I can see the, I can see the argument of it being a 10-year investment, but I also can see the point of it being difficult to have it as a capital expense. And so I think if I'm interpreting what I'm hearing correctly, that's kind of the, the big fulcrum.
And, and that, and, you know, there are other options. They, I don't know that the community has spoken on this. This is the first time it came on our agenda was tonight, and this is the first time I've heard that they're planning on keeping mobile units there for 10 years. Now, at first, when the mobile units were talked about, the number I heard was a million five. That number went down, and it, I think it was around $800,000 or $900,000 that was floating around at a joint meeting. That, that number looks like it's staying pretty steady. But I have some concerns. We do have some capacity in, in that system still. But, so there are other options, and there's this option that we've got, the Harding Avenue Elementary, if it's similar cost as Bellevue, and you're getting ready to spend a million dollars on something that's going to depreciate and that you're going to be getting rid of in a few years potentially, do we, is the right thing to do? Do we want to get input from our citizens? Do we want to be transparent? You know, I don't know how many folks read the agenda and looked at the letter and saw that this was the intent, and then they were going to know that they're going to have mobile units in Black, in Harding Avenue Elementary School for 10 years. I, I don't think that folks could have actually read that and had that type of transparency and had the opportunities to reach out to board members. So I'm happy to vote. We have talked about the Christiansburg athletics, that has been something that was at joint meetings, that's something that we all discussed. There was liaison meetings that Ms. Biggs's notes, that we talked about, the Christiansburg athletic fields. That's been something that's been talked about in detail, and the citizens have had that opportunity to talk with us about it, and we've got input. Sometimes it's not all good. Some people were upset about it, but at least they had an opportunity to be heard. And so I'm happy to, to vote on that portion of it and vote on it tonight, but I can't vote in favor of seeing this as a capital expense right now, and then on top of that, only having a meeting and only basically having a very short explanation on it.
I'll, I'll agree with both Steve and, and Chris. And I think trying to, using the Blacksburg Middle School, that situation is totally different. I mean, that was a, an emergency all the way around. Everybody knew it had to happen, and everybody knew it was going to be temporary. So I, I agree with.
So I'm, I'm a little confused. What alternatives do we have other than splitting it apart? But what alternatives to the overcrowding at Harding Avenue do we have at this moment in time?
There is still some capacity at Prices Fork, and so the shifting within, just like Christiansburg did a shift, where there's capacity at Falling Branch, that's a hard decision. It's a hard decision that some of the school board members might have to make. But if they knew that they were going to potentially be able to have an upgraded school instead of spending on a million dollars on temporary structures, that's going to be gone. Those citizens, I believe, have the right to have an input on that decision-making. And I don't know if that brief letter and brief explanation gives them that opportunity. Now, they may say that's the worst idea in the world, but at least we'll know about it. But the way this has come before the board and seemingly out of, I didn't know we were going to get hit with this until I started getting ready for the meeting. There was no, I, I didn't hear any discussions about it at the county meetings with, where we had the joint meetings that this was going to be coming up as far as with the town and Virginia Tech and the schools. So I understand that they may have to use their operating funds, and if that's something that they have to do, but I, this vote is my vote, and I just don't feel comfortable that we're being, one, it transparent enough that this is the right decision to be making for Harding Avenue kids.
I have a question, one more question. Didn't either this board or the school board in the last five or so years, as a result of the Prices Fork Elementary School, discuss redistricting the Blacksburg strand, and it was off the charts? No? Didn't that happen?
There was a decision, I was going to say it since I've been on the board, but that was a school board decision, and they hired, hired a study, and I think they changed the kids from Merrimack was the biggest change. And somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm relying on my memory. But even then, this might be a temporary. This might be for two or three years until, or maybe four, until we can look at some additional funding. You know, there was discussion this past budget year about putting additional money away for capital. And frankly, this was one of my concerns, that we were going to have more kids in mobile units, and now we're hearing that they're going to be in mobile units for 10 years.
So if, if we kind of keep following along with that, would, would the school division buy mobile units at the lower quality instead of these more expensive ones for the next three, four years? Or I, I don't know what they.
I don't know, but those are good questions to be asking and good questions to get input from citizens about.
Doesn't the Harding, I mean, I know that the staff at Harding Avenue and the parents already know about this, right?
Yes, ma'am. What happened is, and there, when we presented, when Dr. Meyer presented the cap, we showed out a 10-year plan that reflected CE, CPS, BE, CHS, Harding, Gilbert, Lancaster. And those, Harding, Gilbert, Lancaster was in the last three years of that 10 years. So it's, we've known that Harding wasn't on the list, or as we projected, it was on the list in two years, seven. When the decision was that the growth was there, we did a survey of the entire school. And the decision was on the modular and the location that we're putting it on their, I call it their ball courts. So I would agree with Mr. Tuck that maybe we haven't done per se community meetings like you would typically see with building additions. But I, I, I do think there's been, again, not to the extent that Mr. Tuck described and Mr. Fajekowski's describing, but there has been some engagement with the community. The challenge we have is that where Harding's at and where Prices Fork's at, I'm jumping two elementary districts. So to do a rezon would be fairly, it's doable, but I mean, it would take a lot of time for us to pull that together. And that's not something I don't think you do temporarily and then try to reverse it behind, you know, later on. It's something you've got to look at at a great length. And Prices Fork's got a lot of potential construction, as I've seen from the county planning. While it has capacity today, it could, it is projected to get to full capacity over the next five to 10 years.
Because when it was built, it was built for the growth that would occur in the Prices Fork area.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why it was built bigger, because in the past, when schools have been built, they have not been built big enough, and then they become at capacity very quickly.
Soon they will.
As like has happened, you know, in different strands. So, I mean, I get that. I'll tell you what I'm worried about. I'm telling my fellow board members what I'm really worried about here. I'm worried about that we only have eight weeks, and I'm worried about when you're doing something on that scale in the town of Blacksburg, I'm worried about the various approvals that you'll have to go through when you're, you know, trying to get all that done, because you want to have it done when school opens.
And that's why, if, if needed, we could go to our, we would have to go to our operating funds. And if that's the will of the Board of Supervisors, then that's something I'll discuss with Superintendent of the board, but I think it is something we could, it'll put a strain, and it's obvious dollars that, that, you know, we've got to take them someplace else within our GP budget. But I think it's something that we could, you know, we could do because we have to proceed to get classrooms in.
I just got a couple of questions. You, Ray says $200,000 for mobile units.
Yes, sir.
And you said you could pull that out of your operating budget?
Correct. Of the 350,000, 400, we estimate the cost is, we're putting another, we're putting 200 already out of our operating funds.
Right.
So we would have to take this other 200 out of the operating funds.
Well, if, if you have that, as Supervisor Tuck mentioned, about renting versus buying. And I understand their part, because I, I do too. When we done the agenda, you know, this wasn't ours.
Right.
If we put this off to our next meeting, and you said you're going to have to start on your project anyway.
Right, yes, sir.
If this is approved, maybe this, your 200 and this 200 could go towards buying them instead of wasting money on renting.
And I would gladly pull more data together and come back at the, at the meeting on the 24th.
Well, see, I think that's the biggest problem, you know? This here was just chucked up on us.
And, and that's fine. We can, if you would agree, we can proceed under operating, and then I'll come back with a more detailed.
Well, I can't guarantee you, you know.
And you mean that proved it in?
That's right. I mean, you know, you have to do what you need to do, but what I'm saying is, if you got it in your operating budget, and if this board approves the 200, maybe you could look at buying instead of renting.
Yes, sir. You're correct.
That, I think that's the kind of information that we're looking for.
So if you would agree, we'll pull the 200, and, and I'll come back on the 24th.
Can I ask a question?
If you.
Go ahead.
One second, please. So if, if you have it in your operating, and you, I know, you know schools we don't know.
Yes, sir.
So you, you know if you have to move forward or not. But what I'm saying, and Supervisor Tuck said, you know, if we look at buying instead of leasing, none of us up here, I think, if I'm speaking out of turn, please say so, don't want to see kids in mobile units.
Well, I hope I haven't portrayed that, because that's not, that's definitely not the case.
We got them away from in Falling Branch, we got them away from in Reiner and other areas. I don't, I don't want to see Blacksburg kids in mobile units, I just don't.
And, 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 again, I don't, I'm not trying to portray that to the board.
Right, right.
Definitely not the case.
Right.
I think Mr. Fajekowski asked a very valid question, I think Mr. Tuck asked a very valid question. So I don't take, please, I don't take offense because I think the questions are something I would ask if I was sitting on your side of the table.
Right.
If, you know, if you, if it is the will of the Board of Supervisors, I'd ask for us, we just, we pull the 200 off from tonight, and I'll come back on the 24th with, I think I can address y'all's concerns, and, and then, you know, you may decide to fund it, or we may all decide to wait a year and see how things go.
Okay. Supervisor Bong?
I don't see where the math actually works for this year. 200 comes out of this proposal. You've got.
And that 200 sitting in the capital.
Mm-hmm.
So we wouldn't use it.
You're still going to put in trailers.
I'm going to come out of my operating funds.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're going to proceed.
And it's going to cost 400,000.
And I'll present at the 24th meeting. And give you more information, and then the Board of Supervisors can decide whether to proceed with the 200, or maybe it's best for us to buy them at this point in time.
Yeah, if we try to buy it, where's the other 600,000 coming from?
I don't think the total purchase price was 600.
Or even 900,000. So, you know, I don't, I, please explain that to me so that I can see that waiting until the 24th.
I had that purchase, I had that purchase price, and I don't have it on top of my head right now. Their use to purchase are not as bad. If you start leasing it beyond two to three years, it's almost better to buy them. Because you end up paying about, you know, close to what you would deal with in acquisition costs.
So what is leasing? What does leasing cost for two to three years? That's about the right number.
It's $65,000 a year for us to lease.
Mm-hmm. Times three is 180, 90, 200,000.
200,000.
In addition to the 200,000 to put them there.
Yeah, but I think, again, I don't have the purchase price at the top of my head.
So maybe it's a half and 600,000.
Actually, I think it's a little bit less than a half.
Okay.
But again, I'm not going to swear to it because.
So do we.
It's been a long time since I looked at that.
Right, so the question is, do we have an extra 200,000 anywhere to actually help buy these things as an alternative on the 24th as opposed to letting this go today?
Well, he said he had that in his operation budget, and if he comes back and gives us a price on it, and we approve this 200, there's 400,000 there.
Yeah, we're still looking for at least 200, more thousand.
He don't know, he don't know what the price is.
Yeah, let me come back on the 20, I'm not going to lose anything coming back on the 24th. We right now are in the process of working with the town of Blacksburg on all the permitting. We've got one of our two, we expect to get the second one on contingency so we can continue moving forward with all of our utilities. That'll be the biggest thing we'll be doing between now and the 24th. The units themselves aren't projected to come in until the week of the 24th, right now. And then we would be doing setup, install for the next four weeks. The goal is to have those units completely set up August 1st.
So I'm still confused. What's our alternative?
To see what the, see what the purchase price is compared to renting them.
And we're still going to have trailers in Blacksburg?
And nobody is saying any different.
Yeah. And the only difference is, are you going to buy them or are you going to lease them?
Okay.
It may be better to buy them, as he stated, than to lease them.
It will not stop me the two weeks.
If we had another 100 to 200,000 dollars.
We don't know yet. He don't know the purchase price.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I get you.
I'm glad to come back on the 24th. It won't, it won't, as long as everybody understands, it's not going to slow us down, we're going to keep moving.
So can the resolution be amended?
Well, that's what I was going to say, you've got a motion and a second on the floor that includes that, so if, if the one who made the motion and second, if one admitted to remove that, that's their.
I accept that.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then he would be.
I accept it as long as we come back and we talk about this because this has to be done.
I will be back on the 24th, but we're going to proceed.
Yeah, and it sounds like to me that, you know, it's going to go ahead and get done. And that's what I'm worried about. I'm worried about those kids.
These kids, it's going to happen.
Okay.
Because we've worked hard with the town, and I can't afford any delays.
Yeah.
So we're going to proceed, but I'll be back here on the 24th. So, we're going to proceed, but I'll be back here on the 24th.
And I think what, one thing that we all need to understand is that right now there isn't an alternative to, you know, what we're talking about, and, and with the way that we have our monies to be spent, you know, Blacksburg schools are not going to be addressed right away.
Right.
I think everyone knew that going in, because we're spending our money on the Christiansburg strand right now, and that's what we need to do. So, you know, need to do that. So, okay.
And taking the money out of your operations isn't going to compromise.
Well, I have any compromise, no, ma'am.
Your operations.
Absolutely not.
Because it's summertime and.
No, ma'am. Absolutely not. Have no compromise.
It would be if we didn't approve, right? And.
If I were to delay this and stop all work and couldn't do anything between now and the 24th, yes, ma'am, it would be, that would be difficult for me to make the first.
What if we don't approve the 200,000 on the 24th, when you already have everything in motion?
The, the 200 that's on here right now, I can, I will be able to fund out of our operations. I'll have to tighten some things down, but I can fund it out of those operating funds.
But the objective, you weren't planning on doing that.
No, ma'am.
You were planning on using the 200,000.
I was planning on using the capital fund.
Right.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at the clerk, because Marty's not here. I believe if the, the person who makes the motion and the person who seconds it both agree to amend the motion.
Friendly amendment.
It's friendly amendment, and they can vote on the motion with the friendly amendment. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't want to trip that up.
Okay.
So, you have a motion that's been friendly amended.
Okay.
And that's something I can support.
I can, yeah.
So, the, the friendly amendment was to remove the request for the 200,000.
Remove the 200,000.
But we're still dealing with the request for the Christiansburg Athletics.
Yes.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
I have to read a disclosure statement. Pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I, Darrell Shepherd, a member of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, make the following disclosure. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, I am expected to participate in the discussion and to vote upon the appropriation of the county budget, which includes the appropriation of funds for Montgomery County Public Schools. My wife and I are currently employed in positions with the Montgomery County Public School System, and our annual income shall exceed 5,000 annually. I am a member of a large group of employees of the Montgomery County Public Schools, the members of which are affected by the appropriations of the Montgomery County's budget. I am able to participate in the discussion and approval of the appropriations of the county budget, including the appropriation of funds for Montgomery County Public Schools fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Therefore, I will participate in the discussion and vote upon the appropriation of the Montgomery County Budget, including the appropriation of funds for Montgomery County Public Schools. A copy of this disclosure has been filed with the clerk of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors and given under my hand this 10th day of June 2019. Aye.
A plain of order. Isn't that disclosure for D and not E?
May have been for both, because both of these are appropriations to Montgomery County Schools. This is specifically the schools, but the budget covers both.
So, your disclosure should go for D and E, right?
I think that's probably, yeah.
Okay.
Does that make it a problem for the last vote?
We could re, if it did, we could re-vote. I'd be happy.
I think we should.
Yeah, because I have to read my disclosure.
Why don't we go ahead and recast the votes on that?
Well, let him read his.
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, the county administrator.
Could we go ahead and vote on the resolution that's on the floor that you related to Item E? Complete that vote, and then go back to Item D?
Yeah, that'd be smart. I like that.
But.
I, I guess I need to vote, and then Steve can read his.
Okay, yeah. Chair Tuck, I mean, Chair Tuck.
I'm with the chair. Aye.
Mr. Fajekowski?
Yes. My disclosure is pursuant to the State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act, I, Steve R. Fajekowski, a member of the Board of Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, make the following disclosure. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, I am expected to participate in the discussion of and to vote upon the appropriation of the county budget, which includes the appropriation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools. My wife is currently employed by the Montgomery County Public School System, and her annual income shall exceed 5,000 annually. I am a member of a large group, my wife being an employee of the Montgomery County Public Schools, the members of which are affected by the appropriation of the Montgomery County budget. I am able to participate in discussions and approval of the appropriation of the county budget, including the appropriation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Therefore, I will participate in the discussion of and vote upon the appropriation of the Montgomery County budget, which includes the appropriation of funds for the Montgomery County Public Schools. A copy of this, of this disclosure has been filed with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, given under my hand this 10th day of June 2019. Aye.
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 Chair King?
Aye.
Sow.
Now, we're going to back up and do D again.
If, I think what we need is a motion and a second to reconsider the vote.
I was going to make a motion to reconsider, and I believe that Roberts' rules of order would allow me to make that motion since I voted in favor.
Since you voted in the affirmative, that's correct.
So, I would make a motion that we revisit the appropriations out of abundance of caution. You know, Justice Roberts read President Obama twice the oath of office, and so this is just kind of covering our bases. But I would make that motion that we revisit that and to allow my fellow supervisors to read the disclosures again.
And I would second that, since I brought it up.
We need to vote on that.
Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Shepherd?
So, I need to read your disclosure.
No, right now, you're just voting to vote again. Yeah, you're voting to vote again, so this is.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Fajekowski?
Sorry to be so much trouble.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Sow.
Now, you need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Fajekowski?
Sorry to be so much trouble.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Sow.
Now, you need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Fajekowski?
Sorry to be so much trouble.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Sow.
Now, you need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Fajekowski?
Sorry to be so much trouble.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Sow.
Now, you need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Fajekowski?
Sorry to be so much trouble.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Now, you need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Fajekowski?
Sorry to be so much trouble.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Sow.
Now, you need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget appropriation.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Fajekowski?
Sorry to be so much trouble.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Sow.
Now, you need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget appropriation.
Second. Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Fajekowski?
Sorry to be so much trouble.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Sow.
Now, you need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2019, 2020 budget appropriation.
Second. Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Ms. Beetz?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Fajekowski?
Sorry to be so much trouble.
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Sow.
It'd be a whole lot easier if y'all took a pay cut.
We'd still have to read it.
All right, moving right on. Could we call Marty and see if he got a report?
Yeah, let's do it.
Well, he usually doesn't.
I can say no report if you want me to.
Call Marty.
No report, Mr. Chair.
County administrator report.
I have six quick items.
Oh, be quick.
First, I want to thank everybody again for the participation in the road viewer, road viewers tour on Saturday. Supervisor Tuck and Chair King, we missed you. It was a rainy ride, but we got to see, I see a lot of pretty countryside. But I appreciate everybody going out. David Clark with VDOT will be providing some information back to us on what we saw and discussed about the roads while we were out there Saturday. But again, thank you for your time. I wanted to let you know that we are interviewing, we being, several staff members are interviewing four firms for the broadband inventory study that we've been talking about. That will be all day on Friday, so hopefully, pretty soon, we'll be having a recommendation to you on how we move forward with that very important study. Don't forget that we have an extended work session next Monday night, beginning at 6:00, to talk about county capital projects and where we are with several of those. Location is to be determined. We'll get some more information out on that. We had talked about doing it at MP2. We've also talked about maybe having it over at the Animal Care and Adoption Center, simply because that location is right beside one of the areas we're going to be talking about. So, we'll let you know once we confirm a few things there.
And there are lots of kittens that need new homes.
I didn't think about that, but I'll, but yes, there are, and if anyone's interested in adopting, please go by and see them. I do want to mention that our thoughts continue to be with our associates down in Virginia Beach. Week ago, Friday was a very tragic day for them. County staff has reached out to our counterparts in Virginia Beach and expressed our concern and thoughts. Also, I will say, without getting into detail, that has prompted a lot of discussion among county staff and leadership about county facilities. We continue to take a hard look at several things, and we'll be talking more about that in the days ahead as well. Next week, I will be in Virginia Beach Tuesday evening through Thursday for the VLGMA Conference. It actually runs through Friday, but one of my children are getting married next, a week from Saturday, and I was told I have to be back for that, so I will be back for that, or I will not have a family. Last thing I wanted to mention is, I would ask that you tentatively hold Thursday, September 12th, on your calendar. We'll get more information out on this. Several of the regional county administrators have been talking about a joint meeting at the VT Carillion Institute down in Roanoke. Several of the administrators have had the opportunity to tour that facility. It's amazingly impressive what they're doing down there, and several of us got to talking about it. Would really be neat if we could have our elected officials come down.[1442.12]